Call to order this session of the Atwater City Council for June 12th, 2017. If you'll please all rise for the pledge and followed by the invocation by Chaplain McClellan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fathers, we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can. We thank you for the fact that we have assembled here tonight to discuss the affairs of our city. I do pray, Lord, to be with our council members and our mayor. We thank you for their service. We ask that you have your hand upon them and bless them. And Father, everything that is said and done tonight would be that to glorify thy name. Lord, we seek your wisdom, we seek your face. We also pray for our police that are patrolling tonight. We ask, Lord, that you protect them, build a hedge around them, get them home safely. We thank you for their service and, Lord, we thank you for their families. We also pray for our fire, the men that are working, and we just ask, Lord, that you protect them as well and get them home safely. We thank you for this time. We ask that, like I said, everything that's said and done tonight would be to uplift you and glorify thy name, for we do ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Creighton?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Viera?
Here.
Vineyard?
Here.
Price?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor or city attorney, report out from closed session.
Mr. Terpstrick, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Prior to tonight's meeting, council did meet in closed session to conduct an interview with a candidate for the interim city manager position, and a decision was made to move forward with contacting that applicant and offering the position. When that position is filled and the contract is entered, we will report out as the details of that transaction. In addition, council provided direction to staff on disposal of real property and received an update on labor negotiations. No further reportable action was taken.
No subsequent needed items have been brought forth, but we would like to, the next item is approval of agenda as posted or as amended.
Are there any items on the agenda which any council member would like to amend? Any additions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, agenda is as posted.
Second. Further discussion? Call for the question.
Viera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ceremonial matters, presentation to Dora Anderson.
Chicken. Dora, if you'll come forward, please. It's my pleasure this evening. I've been speaking with Dora. Dora has been our representative for the city of Atwater, and this is for the Plus America beauty pageant to which she placed number one, and she represents the city of Atwater. Oh, yes. Yeah. So, we want to recognize Dora this evening for her accomplishments and that, you know, you do our city proud, and we are so glad that you have taken it upon yourself to do that. And as a token of our esteem, we want to give you recognition for the state queen, Dora Anderson, for earning her title in the Plus America beauty pageant.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Also, the Plus America, I would like to first say thank you to God, and thank you too, Mayor, for believing in me, you and Frank Pietro and his absent. I did take the title of the overall queen, but I'm going back to compete next year for Calif- Miss California.
Wonderful.
And this is to you from California Plus America. One has your name on it, one has Frank's today morning.
Well, well, thank you very much.
And thank you.
Thank you so much, and if you'll all give her your support in the future. You're going for the national title, are you not?
I'm going for nationals next year. I'm going to compete for Miss California, for Miss California. And if I went for Miss California, I get to go to nationals in Texas for Miss USA.
There you go. Thank you so very much.
Next item, presentation to first responders to this Applegate exit accident.
Chief Joseph, are you anywhere around? While everybody is getting in place here, I don't think it's a secret to anyone just exactly what occurred here a couple of weeks ago and the loss of life that unfortunately occurred as a result of this horrible accident that we had. You know, on that day in particular, I was, you know, as you all know, I work out at Castle, and when that accident occurred and I saw that huge plume of black smoke coming up, I could actually see some of the flames from clear out of Castle coming up. That fire was huge, and, you know, it just blew me away on just how bad that really was. About forty minutes, forty-five minutes after the initial accident, I called Chief Joseph and said, "I need to get out there," you know, and, you know, the fire pretty much subsided by then. When I got out there, the first people I met right there at the intersection of Applegate and Commerce was Officer Duncan and Officer Walker, controlling traffic out there, what have you. And then I went with Chief Pimentel into the incident command scene, and from there got a survey of the accident. I've never seen anything in my entire life that rose to the level of destruction that came from this whole thing, and the smells in the air and everything that was out there is just a horrific scene. But, you know, there were some people from our police department that were out there that made this whole situation a lot better than what it could have been. For all those that saw the footage of the McDonald's out there, they had just had their last drive-through customer go through that particular McDonald's. Had there been cars lined up there for the lunch crowds, that kind of thing, this could have had a whole different outcome. And we thank God that it didn't have anybody in there. So, I guess to say that about the only real damage was somebody who lost their car over there at the Panda Express, that car, man, it was ate up bad. So, you know, the obvious damage to the street and everything, you know, was there. But I wanted to particularly recognize this evening Officer Rivera, he's not here tonight. Okay. Officer Walker, Officer Duncan, Officer Jantsch, Dash, Martin, and Vargas, Code Enforcement Officer Velasquez, Officer Morales, Sergeant Brum, Detective Cordoza, and Sergeant Sargentson. I guess all those guys are pretty much not out here, right? They're all working, yeah. However, we do have here one of our councilmen, Police Volunteer Jim Vineyard, Victor One, who is here, and we want to recognize him, Volunteer Martin, Volunteer Wilkinson, and Volunteer Pinto. Sure, bring them on up. Sammy, can you? Okay. Yeah, they're all buried in there. While he's looking those up, I want to also recognize city workers here and, you know, throughout our whole staff. There was a lot of people here that played an important part in how this whole thing was kind of made some normalcy to. Recognize Brian Shaw, Mark Pareda, Mark's here, Ramon Garcia, Mike Stanford, Justin Visin- Vincent, I'm sorry, Renee, how you say his name?
Macias.
Macias, thank you. Matthew Derail, and Samuel Burris. Any of you guys, if you're in here, come on up. In any case, you know, this was a big deal to our community. We're still putting the pieces back together again, moving as quickly as we can, but I think we need to, you know, also without, you know, the whole thing is, is that everybody came together on this thing. I want to also thank Chief Pimentel for having, you know, the forethought to get Castle involved, get their crash truck from Station 62, come out there. That was, that, I think, was what really got this whole thing knocked down as quickly as it was. We're saddened, and we still pray for the family of those, family members and friends of the driver of the truck that lost his life in this accident, but we also thank God that not more people were injured or killed from this horrific incident. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Joseph.
Yeah. If we can have Cal Fire come up here, too, we appreciate it. Let me tell you, if you, whoever was there or didn't know or didn't see what happened or have been by there, it's amazing, like the mayor said, that we only have one person that was deceased as a matter of this. So, myself and Sergeant Wisdom were at a training seminar in De Niere, California at the time, from PG&E regarding explosions in the cities, what do you do? And while I was there, we had fire captains and chiefs from Merced, Cal Fire, and Highway Patrol, they were all there, and all of a sudden phones started going off, and then people were leaving the class, and I'm thinking, how do they get out of class early? I want to get out of class, too. So, we're waiting there, and all of a sudden my phone goes off, and we walk outside from De Niere, we're at this church, or not church, like a wedding place. We look outside, and you can see the smoke as if it was right there from De Niere. And we went in there, we responded, everybody just left the class, and we started going a hundred miles an hour, no, a hundred miles an hour, but pretty class, down to get over Santa Fe, and when we got there, it looked like World War Z. It was another world, and like the mayor said, I saw Cal Fire, our police officers were the first ones on scene, Officer Walker, Duncan Rivera, they got people out of the businesses. If they were not there in the beginning, even in those businesses at, with the workers inside Panda and McDonald's, you would have had several dead just from that alone, and that including the timeframe. Thank God it happened the way it happened, otherwise you would have, there's no way they would have survived. It was like, they would, it just came and extinguished whatever was there. But Cal Fire, the chiefs and stuff, she did an awesome job on scene. She controlled it, it was amazing. I don't know how they did it, I thought it was a training mission, how calm and cool they were. I'd have been panicking. They were having a big time over there. So, and the volunteers, they took over control of the streets. These men, Mr. Vineyard leading the pack on these two gentlemen over here, they controlled, and who else was there, too? There's one missing.
Manu.
And they shut off the streets like you wouldn't believe with smoke coming in their faces, and they didn't stop. They were thirsty, we tried to get them water bottles as best we could, but it was a tough task. And then these, and then this man right here, Brian, and Mark, let me tell you, Brian is amazing, I give you credit, buddy. You came there and took control, and I feel so bad for you in the media. They had you, like you were on everybody's Facebook, and they had, they were going after, and Mark took over there, too, to contain the area, because it was literally like a nuclear bomb just hit it. And again, I credit our police department, the fire department, our staff, and the entire city for helping and saving several lives in there. And then again, thank God it didn't happen. And again, you know, we feel bad for the driver, but it could have been much, much worse. But these gentlemen and men and women did an awesome job in our police department, fire department, and our workers, so again, good job.
You know, I just want to finish up, you guys can have a seat now if you'd like. I just want to also make note, for those that may have seen the morning newspapers, we had an incident up on Fruitland where there was a 9/11 call at about 2:30 in the morning on the 11th, and it involved a rather large party, forty people or so, violence type thing, 9/11 calls coming in, people with a gun. And we had people coming in on that particular incident, and Sammy, can you help me again with the names for those? You can just, if you want to grab that microphone right there. Or the one on the-
Yes, it was, the officers on scene were Officer De Silva, as new training officer, Officers Torres were there, and Officer, Sergeant Sargentson were there and on scene, and we got assistance from the CHP as well.
And we also might make note that we had our newly sworn-
That's the officer that was untrained with Officer De Silva.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it was, that could have been a disaster as well, and so.
Yeah, I just wanted to make note that, you know, this was like forty people, weapons that nobody knew who had what. They came in, they took charge of that situation. Sergeant Sargentson made entry into the house where there was a gentleman trying to get out a shotgun. There was also another individual that, there was supposed to be a handgun in a car, he was going out after that. People were being tased left and right around there to get control of the whole thing. Bottom line is, is that, you know, we take this incident that happened with tanker truck that rolled, we take an incident like what we just had here the other night with this huge party where, you know, there were weapons involved, forty people, obviously, probably, you know, at that hour of the morning, they're not out there drinking Kool-Aid and Hawaiian Punch. So, we know that that, you know, wasn't the best of circumstances, and it's a true testament to our police department and those guys that rolled on that call to come into a place like that under horrible circumstances, not knowing what they have in store for them, and they run towards the danger, they're not running away from it. And it's a true testament to the courage and the professionalism of our police department, and I just want to personally, Sammy, pass along my thanks for all of them for a job very, very well done.
Presentation to city employees for responding to traffic and pedestrian accidents.
We got a whole lot of heroes here, guys, I'm sorry. Mark Pareda, would you come up here again, please? And is Ramon here?
Mayor, just, Mr. Garcia's dad had a stroke this weekend, and he's there taking care of him, so we're going to wish him and his family the best tonight since he can't attend.
Okay. Well, this was another, it was actually the day following the tanker truck accident. For those who didn't know, we had right out in front here at City Hall at the intersection, right here at Bellevue and right here. Any case, we wound up having a vehicle rollover, two vehicles out there, and Ramon and Mark.
Ramon on that one.
Pardon me?
Ramon on that one.
Ramon on that one, okay. So, Ramon had seen this accident, he was like the first one there, correct? And he was right in on it, he was helping extricating children, from what I understand, from out of this van that was overturned and was rendering whatever aid he could to that situation. It's, man, this is, you know, it's heartwarming, you know, they, you know, you don't have to be a first responder. Here we had somebody that just took it upon himself, did not just run for help, he was the help, and he went out there until help did arrive and rendered whatever aid he could to those victims of that car crash. And thank God, nobody was seriously hurt in that one, and so, okay. And now for Mark Pareda. Sammy?
No certificate? Well, Mark, with which accident, we came out there. Yeah, well, Mark, let me tell you something about Mark real quick. Mark is one of those workers that, he's on his own, I feel kind of bad for him, how much he, effort he puts, but when it comes to the citizens of Atwater, he sees something, an accident or anything, he responds and takes care of matters. And as a hero, to me, he really are a hero, taking care of those matters, because you're not trained in that kind of stuff, and we know that, but you take care of matters yourself, and we appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
The Merced County Tobacco Control Program.
My name is Gisala, and we are from the Youth Advisory Board of Merced County. We are the California Health Collaborative, and we are-
Speak up real loud, girls, so that everybody at home can hear and see you on the tube.
We are here to talk about wiping out secondhand smoking. Secondhand smoke is the smoke from the burning end of a cigarette pipe or cigar, and also the smoke that is exhaled by smokers. Two different types of smoke come from burning tobacco, side stream smoke, smoke from the lightened end of the cigarette pipe or cigar, mainstream smoke, the smoke exhaled by a Secondhand smoke is harmful indoors and outdoors. It's known to harm the environment because cigarette butts aren't biodegradable, they're made out of plastics, so they just stay there on the ground. Thirty-four percent of California litter is cigarette butts, and in the whole nation, cigarette butts are the most littered. The more secondhand smoke you breathe, the higher the level of these harmful chemicals in your body.
Studies found that the amount of levels in outdoor areas are just as equal to areas where smoking is allowed. Some people think that while they're not smoking, it, so it's okay, not going to hurt them, but the smoke of cigarettes can trigger asthma attacks, which makes it difficult to breathe.
Small children and even animals are at risk of swallowing, choking, or burning themselves with cigarette butts, because they see adults and other teenagers smoking, so they think it's okay to pick it up and put it in their mouth. And cigarette butts also get into our streams, creeks, lakes, and rivers, and toxin, the toxins get in the water and harm the quality.
Smoke-free policies that communities have state that tobacco use is not acceptable behavior for near kids. To avoid contact with secondhand smoke, a person would have to be twenty-five feet away across the street from each other, yet twenty-five feet is not far enough because smoke travels in the air.
Some outdoor, smoke-free outdoor laws, there's smoke-free public parks, playgrounds, youth sport fields, and smoke-free public outdoor venues such as farmer markets, fairs, parades, concerts, any other events on public property.
California Health Collaborative, Merced County Tobacco Control Program staff and volunteers, sample laws and templates, fund educational activities, media recognition.
Those are available resources, and this is our contact information.
All right. Thank you, Garret.
Excuse me, Mayor, I don't know if the fire department noticed that, but cigarettes cause fires, did you notice?
Monthly verbal report by Merced County District Three Supervisor McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I come to you tonight with, what, thirty-five slide presentation? Can we queue that up? No, I'm just kidding. So-
Thank you, Darren. You went for it and-
So, anyway, update for Merced County from our last meeting, and I'm going to give an update going into our next meeting, which is next week. We're having our Development Services grand opening. Last month, Merced County completed renovation of its Development Service Center, otherwise known as our one-stop permitting center, which will offer a streamlined process for those looking to start or grow businesses. The project brings together a variety of departments, including planning, public work, Public Health Division of Environmental Health, fire, to improve customer service while processing and reviewing all applications. So, the short story of this is, you come into one spot on the second floor of the county building, and everybody, there's one stop. Each single person can help you with each one of those items, and if there's any questions, there'll be somebody on hand instantaneously to be able to help out with that. The new Development Service Center creates a central location, comprehensively addressed development-related topics, and to facilitate better collaboration and coordination between county departments with the goal of moving at the speed of business. There'll be a grand opening, 4:00 PM, this coming Monday. We invite all of you to come. It's at County Administration Building on the second floor. County budget. The Board of Supervisors will consider this year's proposed budget at its June 20th meeting, next Tuesday. The total budget is $620.9 million with $495.5 million in programmatic funding and 1.2, or 125.4 million funded out of local discretionary resources. Public safety continues to be the budget priority and is allocated more than fifty-three percent of this county's budget. The county's slow recovery from the Great Recession has steadily improved the outlook of the past four budgets and moved us into a more favorable direction. It has been eight years since the last recession ended. The historic economic cycle shows that the recessions occur on average of every five to six years, so the board will consider continuing moving at a steady and cautious fiscal approach to lessen the impacts on future economic downturns. We are actually looking at twelve to fourteen months, seeing the next cycle of downturn, and we're trying to prepare for that. This month is All Dads Matter Month. At our last Board of Supervisors meeting, we proclaimed All Dads Matter Month to reinforce the importance of promoting responsible fatherhood. The proclamation is also highlighted Saturday's 11th Annual Celebration of Fatherhood at Applegate Park. The All Dads Matter Program is put on by Merced County Human Services Agency. Lamar Henderson is the leader of that. I always like to give him the kudos, because he and I were both Merced College Blue Devils at the same time. He played football when I played basketball. But it offers a safe environment for dads to discuss issues relating to fatherhood. The program offers support and encouragement to the fathers of our community while offering education on a broad range of subjects relating to fatherhood experience. This month is also Elder Abuse Awareness Month. During the last meeting, the board declared June Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Human Services Agency, Area Agency on Aging has teamed up with the District Attorney's Office to increase awareness about elder and dependent adult abuse by launching a month-long educational resource campaign called No Abuse, Report Abuse. The purpose of this campaign is to educate people about various types of abuse, how it is recognized, how to recognize the signs of abuse, and how to report abuse. Check Merced County social media, Facebook or Twitter, to stay in tune on that, to look for other resources. CSAC Institute will be coming into Merced this next Friday. I'll be attending the institute ceremony based on, for those receiving, the CSAC Institute credentials. I am one of those recipients this year. In two and a half years, I was able to get a CSAC credential. I'm actually quite excited about it. This is a multi-course study directed to CSAC, which is the California State Association of Counties, to train county employees, managers, and elected officials on a variety of government-related issues and topics. We made an effort to bring these classes to Merced to increase the number of Merced County employees to receive the training. Not only that, we have multiple other counties that come to Merced to do these trainings, and every training that I'm in, I do remind them to buy gas on their way out of the county, fill it before you leave. I'm also glad to introduce, I do have two new interns for the summer, and we're looking for more interns, and we are currently working on a countywide program. Other departments are doing a very highly active intern program, but for the Board of Supervisors, we're trying to create it for all Board of Supervisors to take advantage of this program that we have put together. I currently have one from George Mason University, Darren DePonte, who has been with me- has been with me a number of other years, and he actually got a six-unit scholarship and a paid internship to be here. So, we're actively looking at other universities and other funding measures to be able to help these students out, because I think putting them in to where we're making real decisions and really looking at the hard data, it really teaches them everything there is about county government. And one thing I can quote Darren is, he was at one of our workshops in Los Banos two weeks ago, and he said he learned more there than he's ever learned in any government class that he's had anywhere. So, are there any questions?
Any questions for Supervisor McDaniel? Hearing that. Thank you, Darren.
Got off easy. Thank you.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. Debbie Macias, Business Agent, AFSMI Labor Union, representing the mid-management unit here in the city of Atwater. And my comments are just to help set the record straight. It has been brought to my attention that at a prior council meeting, possibly the last council meeting, the discussions were had about the issue of furloughs and how, quote, "The unions were not cooperating with the discussion process, the meet-and-confer process." And for the record, I'd like to state that the mid-management unit was not approached to have discussion regarding the furlough process or the furloughs themselves. So, up until May 31st, did we receive our first request to actually meet and confer over the issue of furlough. And upon such receipt, we immediately scheduled an opportunity with the Human Resources Department so that those discussions could take place. And they have happened. As of this morning, a proposal was provided for you to review in closed session. But again, I would just encourage you to be aware that there are multiple bargaining units in this city, and they're represented by their respective labor organizations. And so, it doesn't help that you lump us all together and make comments to the negative that we're failing to cooperate. So, I want to make sure that that's clear. The other thing I'd like to say regarding your plight to restore services to your community and potentially do away with furlough or modify it in some way, shape, or form, I just want, you know, we've given you three options for your review, but I would like you to please remember that we have taken a huge hit and have sacrificed an enormous amount to make sure that this city maintains the services that it does provide to the level that, to the best level possible. We've been unfortunately, you know, hit with attrition, and those positions are not refilled, and so our workloads have substantially increased. Even though we're not on the job as many hours during the week, we still have the same responsibilities to complete the duties and the assignments and the job in that shorter amount of time, and we're doing it with much less people. So, we haven't gotten raises. We haven't got, we're paying more to our peers. I mean, there's a lot of things that we have done and held tight. And so, we're part of the team, and we're here to negotiate in good faith any changes that, you know, we can hopefully come to agreement on. But I just, I hope that we're clear that we're not the enemy, and we're not the adversary, and we're not the ones trying to block, stop, or prevent progress in the city. So, and to the contrary, actually. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Price, the Council. My name is Darrell Davis. I am the president of the Merced Branch, 1047 NAACP. My comments are, I think I've let all of y'all aware of what's going on, but my comments is basically, I'm going to read a letter to the community of Atwater. And the community of Atwater, I love the community of Atwater. When I came here thirty years ago, I was stationed here for the past, for the four years, and Atwater is dear to my heart, so there's always been good relations. So, this letter is to the community. "When I was aware of Frank Johnson's investigation, then the president of the Modesto Branch of the NAACP in November 2016, I became quite disturbed after meeting with Mr. Johnson. He informed me he had been conducting a discrimination investigation against Atwater Police Department since July of 2016. I advised Mr. Johnson to cease the investigation and to contact the NAACP area director and the state branch of the NAACP. Mr. Johnson was told by me that he was conducting this investigation out of his jurisdiction of the NAACP. Mr. Johnson agreed. I was later told by the area director, Mr. Johnson was told to cease with any investigation within this jurisdiction. Shortly thereafter, I followed up the allegations and actions taken by Mr. Johnson with then-city manager Frank Petro and Chief Sammy Joseph. I learned Mr. Johnson not only did not cease his actions, but now was actively disturbing Atwater City Council meetings and sending letters to the mayor, city council members, Petro and Joseph with accusations. Petro advised me that Mr. Johnson continued to give the appearance that the NAACP was spearheading these charges against the city of Atwater. Mr. Johnson's communications were addressed to the city of Atwater as the N-A-A-A-J-O-P. I wrote a letter to the city attorney, Mr. Terpster, advising Mr. Johnson had no authority to act on the behalf of the Merced County Branch of the NAACP, and even no branch authority within the state of California. On 5/8/2017, which was your last meeting, I happened to visit the city council meeting, and as I walked in, Mr. Johnson was at the podium, speaking verbally, attacking the city manager, Mr. McBride, on allegations of corruption. My concern at this time was that Mr. Johnson has given the community of Atwater the impression that the Merced County Branch of the NAACP may be hiding these actions. It is with my sorrows to have someone acting on their own behalf and not representing the same morals and high character that the members of the Merced County Branch of the NAACP and each other branches of the state of California. On behalf of the Merced County Branch of the NAACP, I deeply apologize for actions of Mr. Johnson and sincerely hope to restore our community relations as well as the respected branch of the NAACP. Respectively submitted, Darrell Davis, President of the NAACP." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mary McWaters. I'm the other business agent for AFSMI Local 2703. I represent the miscellaneous and clerical employees. Debbie here is my coworker. I'd also like to say that I heard of the comments that were made at a finance meeting, that we were accused of not cooperating, and that you guys hadn't heard back from us. My divisions are currently in bargaining, okay? We've had one meeting. At that meeting, it was brought up, and it was said to think about ideas, okay? That was all that was said, and this was a couple months ago. It was not six months ago. I just want to make that clear. I also know that at that meeting, it was said that, I'm sure the police officers would love to have three-day weekends. Let me remind everybody, the police officers got their ten percent back. They're getting a hundred percent of their pay. Our people are still getting a ten percent pay cut. So, it's not the same deal, okay? And it was not our employees' decision to have to work four days a week and take a ten percent cut in pay, because I'm sure if you would ask them, they would love to have their money back, and they would love to work five days a week. I think it's time that our employees deserve the credit they deserve. They deserve to be treated with respect. They've given up a lot, and they've been loyal to this city. They gave it up because the city was on the verge of bankruptcy, okay? It was not said, you know, "Hey, you know, what do you guys want to do?" I know, they were told, "You're going to have to take a cut. We're going to have to lay people off. We're going bankrupt." They agreed to do it. So, I really think it's a shame that the employees and the unions are talked about in this light. I hope that, you know, we'd love to work with you guys as best we can. So, I would appreciate it if we can get a little appreciation too. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Councilwoman. Frank Johnson, CEO of the National Association for the Advancement of All People, signed articles, licensed, incorporate with the state of California by the Secretary of State's office. I had resigned my position with the NAACP. No culture on this earth has a monopoly on civil rights, and everyone is accountable for when they break the law. You can go out and get a ticket for running a red light. You pay the fine, but there's still a punishment imposed. The city manager broke the law. It was a misdemeanor. He paid the fines. Thank you. I'm sorry, he paid his taxes. But being in a leadership position, he knew better. And accountability. The city paid out $200,000 to an employee who never worked a day. Still no answers. The city invested sixty, or $600,000 in the solar panels. No answers. Just last year. I commend the fire department and the police department for what they've done this past month with this tragedy. Condolences go out to the family. And I'm still here legally, and I'm still addressing the issues of racism that was committed by the police chief. The documentation proves it. It did exist. It did happen. So, to the contrary of what the NAACP may say about me, I'm going to be here. And I have a right to be here, and I have a right, as a citizen of this country, to speak about civil rights when they're being violated and hold those accountable, and speak on it when they break the law. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark, and I won't reveal my address or my full name due to fear of retaliation. I'm here to mostly address an issue with Intern City Manager Scott McBride and his issue of having the occupancy, the hotel tax essentially here in Atwater, and him failing to be addressed with those issues. I understand that he did pay back all the taxes and everything, but I believe him as a city representative and leader, as an example to everyone, that no one is above the law, and that punishment should be due to everyone regardless of your position and power, should be, in his own accord, resigned from this, from Intern City Mayor, I mean Intern City Manager before June 30th, due to the fact that he did commit a misdemeanor. And according to Merced County Code 532-190, violations of penalties, the "Any person guilty of any provision of this chapter is guilty of a misdemeanor and punished will by a fine and not more than $500, or by imprisonment in the county jail for such a time not more than six months, or both such a fine and imprisonment." Thus, I think that should be enough right there, just to say that his punishment should at least be resignedment, at least, due to the fact that if anyone else committed this crime and was fully prosecuted, they would end up having to pay fines or imprisonment. That's all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Art Yaribi. I'm the owner of A1A Preston's Lock Shop here in Atwater. This year is our fortieth year here. I have a question as to what the city is doing to clean up Broadway, as far as all the shrubs and the trees and that sort of thing that's been taken out. Also, at the end of Atwater Boulevard, our sign has been gone for quite some time. Doesn't seem like anyone is doing anything about that. On the corner of Second and Broadway where my shop is at, I have been keeping it clean because the city workers are just not doing it. My question to you is, I would like to landscape it the way my shop is landscaped, and I don't have a problem keeping it up. I just don't want to get fined or have somebody remove the landscaping that I plan on putting there. So, I guess I need some suggestions or some direction as to where I can go to find out if it's okay to do it, you know, to keep it clean and to put the same landscaping that I have on our property.
Can you answer him?
I can give a call.
Okay. Do we have your contact number, or if we just call Preston's A1?
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I can leave a card. I can come by and leave a card.
Okay. We'll be in contact.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Mr. Bryce.
Gary Bryce, 106 East Mansney Drive, Atwater, California. On a more positive note, I don't know if everyone is aware of this program that Atwater Elementary School District is having in Heller Park, Veterans Park, and Ralston Park. I attended the one over at Heller Park, Slow Start. I went down to the one in Veterans Park today. They also had their drop-in program, which they fed. There was a hundred and eighty kids. I tried to cut line, and two kids about this size removed me from that line. It was a great program, nutritious meal, a better meal than I have sitting home watching TV. Another issue that come up was these mobile food carts that are running around in the city. These food carts are licensed by Merced County. That's where they get their license from. We currently don't have any ordinance to prohibit these folks from coming into our city. So, if we need to keep them out of here, if this is what the council wants, we need to get an ordinance. Number two, recycling bins. From what I can see, there has been none permitted so far. No one has made an application to get their permit, get their location. They can't even keep them from overflowing. The phone numbers that are listed on these recycling bins do not work. No one answers the phone. The websites are gone. No one is responding to anybody. Yard sales. First got my first hate mail. Someone wrote me and said I was wasting my time. There was more important things going on in the city of Atwater. The police department, the cadet, I mean, the volunteers, this month, in May, took down three hundred and five... 305 yard sale signs, which were attached to telephone poles, traffic lights, street signs, a whole lot of yards. We need to start doing something about this. We need to get a hold of this. The directions to their house are on these street signs. We need to go after them or pass an ordinance, limiting these folks to a couple times a month and get a permit, maybe a yearly permit, so we can get some sales or some taxes out of these things. Right now, we're getting no taxes whatsoever. The stores, local stores are not getting this business because they're getting it out of yard sales. I think I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Eric Lee, 1199 Atwater Boulevard. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'll try to make this short because I think there's a game on that people probably want to see. I want to see it. In a short time, you'll be reviewing the master landscape plan and the revised city street tree ordinance, something I have helped work on for a long time with members of our community and city staff. I feel that moving Atwater forward depends on plans like what you'll be reviewing, not only because it affects housing and parks, but also commercial landscaping as well. It establishes guidelines for how Atwater will look going forward, especially the areas in and around Atwater Boulevard and Broadway, which Art just alluded to. As you know, Atwater Boulevard has been a source of complaints and ridicule for years, yet nothing has been done. Well, now maybe we can do something and here is an idea that might help. Like to give an idea when you're negative, right? I can complain all night long, but if I don't give you alternatives or ideas, you're gonna look at me like going, oh, yeah, here's another guy. Yeah, get down. Two years ago, we had talked about putting up signs for Adopta Road and Atwater Boulevard was going to be the shining star of that. We were going to break it up into three sections and those signs would be put up for service clubs, motorcycle clubs, car clubs, athletic teams, individuals, it doesn't matter. And they would be tasked with cleaning sections of Atwater Boulevard just like they do on the freeway and some of the secondary roads in the county. Wouldn't cost the city very much at all and I think it would have a big impact. I think probably the first person I'd want to talk to would be the owner of the flea market, since about a third of the garbage you see on that road comes from that flea market. I've sat there and watched it, code enforcements watched it. We all know what's going on. It blows across the road, people throw stuff out. I think it would be incumbent upon him to be a good citizen and maybe put up a sign there and volunteer to clean up that stretch. I think it would look really good if he did that. The other thing that Art alluded to earlier was the sign that welcomed you in Atwater coming from the north. That was done by Tree Partners. When they first did it, it was really nice. The problem is, there's no irrigation there. And at first, they used a trailer with a tank on the back and they would water it every three or four days. But unfortunately, with cuts and everything, that went by the wayside, plants died, and now the sign's gone. I would like to see maybe Tree Partners brought back in again, maybe a new sign put up. And I think we can find a way to irrigate that. If the farmers can pull black pipe for 1,000 miles, I think we can find a way to get some black pipe in there to help with the irrigating of that particular area. So, that would be the first thing you see when you come into Atwater. The next thing is the flea market, of course, but at least that sign would stand out. I think it would really, really make a difference. Now, putting my money where my mouth is, which I do quite often, Jimmy Pasadori and I are going to volunteer to take care of the two city lots on Third Street and Fourth Street. He doesn't know it yet, so don't tell him until I do tomorrow, please. We will go ahead and maintain the parking areas, clean them, weed them. We also will do some planting. That will be our way of giving back to the community a little bit by keeping those two areas as nice as we possibly can. The one thing I would ask the city to do for us before we started that project would be to make sure that the time clock is either replaced or is functioning and that we have a key to it and that we have control over that time clock because we'll watch the irrigation. Just by the design of that particular area, I'll be going ahead and putting in a drip system. The sprayheads are not effective in an open garden environment. We'll go ahead and put in the drip systems to water it and we'll be responsible for it. I think we can probably do that with the city. I think you can find a way to help us on that. These are just some small steps in helping our community. I kind of want to emulate the big steps that Jim Vineyard took with Heller Park and the people that he got to volunteer to clean that place up and how nice it looks now. It's extremely important that the parks in Atwater look that way because these are people using those parks on weekends who don't have a lot of money to travel other places and it gives them something to do that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, next agenda item, please.
Consent Calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any items on the consent calendar that any council member would like to remove for separate consideration? Mr. Vineyard.
Item 10 and 13, please.
10 and 13, okay. Anyone else? Okay. Entertainer motion for the balance? And is there anyone from the audience that would like to remove an item on the consent calendar for consideration? Okay. Seeing none, entertainer motion for the.
Motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second. Off the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 10, Police Department Activities and Projects for the Month of May 2017.
Chief Joseph. He just stepped out. How convenient. Okay. Let's go to number 13.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw.
Waterwell Levels for the Month of May 2017.
I actually just have a request of Mr. Shaw through the city manager. That gives us the year to date and I'd like to get a comparison of where we were at the same time last year or the last couple of years, if we can do that, to see if we're actually using more water because there's been people who have asked to go to three days of watering a week. But I want to make sure that we're getting the same drawdown or not getting more drawdown than what we did before.
Yeah, I can do that. But we're still, you know, we're still recovering from the drought, so there's still gonna be, you know, low levels. We'll draw it down until they replenish the groundwater.
I understand. I just want to compare them from last year and see.
Yes, I can do that for a couple.
Make sure, just that way I have an answer to give to them where we're at. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
And Chief Joseph hasn't returned. Sergeant Nowetski is not here.
Mr. Mayor, if there was a specific item Councilmember Vineyard wanted to bring up, we could do that and then later after Chief Joseph returns. I assume Councilmember Vineyard doesn't want to hear the whole report, he just has a question?
No, we have a private set of reports.
Okay. Maybe we can do that during council reports, otherwise.
So, we'll just go ahead and approve just 13 then?
No actions required of the district.
Okay, just, of course, okay.
Next item is City Attorney Reports and Update, Verbal Update Regarding City of Atwater Purchasing Manual.
Mr. Terbstra.
I don't have much of an update on this as this was anticipated to be handled by my partner and who is going to be attending tonight, so my recommendation would be to hold this item over to the next meeting so that we can get a more detailed report.
We'll do that. We'll bring this back on the 26th.
Public Hearings, Amending Miscellaneous Fee Schedule.
McQuinder.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Be brought in Resolution Number 2956-17, Amending Miscellaneous Fee Schedule. We are amending some of the fees based on CPI, which is Consumer Price Index. And for the year-to-date, as of April 2017, the CPI is 2.2%. All the departments provided these updated fees to amend according to the actual cost or whichever is more appropriate to charge customers for all these different areas. So, basically, staff is requesting council to adopt that resolution.
Are there any comments from the council pertaining to the fee schedule? Okay, if there's, let's see. This is a public hearing, so a open public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this item on fees may step forward to the podium now, state your name for the record. Seeing nobody coming forward, close to public hearing. Bring it back to the council. Anyone have any comments to the fee schedule? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 2956-17, Amending the Miscellaneous Fee Schedule.
Second.
Off the question.
Viera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton? Oh, I'm sorry, he is a.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Creighton had to leave the chamber.
And Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item, Adopting 2017-2018 Fiscal Year Budget and Approving Fund Expenditures and Fund Transfers, Amending Classification Plan and Approving Salary Schedule B-17 Effective July 1, 2017.
Good evening again. We are here to request the City Council to adopt proposed budget for fiscal year 1718 by adopting Joint Authority Resolution Number 2958-17, Resolution Number AFPD-1-2017, and Resolution Number SA 2017-5, adopting the fiscal year 1718 proposed budget. Also adopting Resolution Number 2959-17 for city of Atwater, Salary Schedule B-17 Effective July 1, 2017.
Mr. McBride, do you have any comments to, you would like to interject at this time?
Mayor, Council, I know that I've had some conversation from all of you since last meeting about the budget and about some items you still want to work on. We're obviously prepared tonight to go through a presentation of the proposed budget for you and it is presented to you as a balanced budget, as you're aware. I think kind of in interest of saving time, though, I think it might be in the best interest to continue this item to the next meeting. And so, Mayor, what I would suggest we do at this point is perhaps have any discussion you'd like to on the budget here, any further direction you want to provide tonight, have the hearing held, and then rather than close the hearing, we just continue it to the next meeting.
Okay. Any council members wishing to comment on any items pertaining to the budget as it's been presented? Mr. Raymond.
I just think it'd be wise to have another, one more workshop.
Okay. And, you know, for the public's information, a lot of discussion going on with respect to numerous budget items on here would be very, very lengthy, I think, if we went through each and every one at this point. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open the public hearing, take testimony from anyone in the audience wishing to make comment to the budget, and as Mr. McBride alluded to, we will then take this item and move it to the 26th. So, at this, go ahead.
Mayor, if the council does want to do a separate workshop, we could handle that by separate notification. We wouldn't have to adjourn to that. We could just leave the continuation and do that as a totally separate process.
Roger. Okay. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the budgetary item, please step forward and state your name for the record. Mrs. Dash.
Good evening, Linda Dash. Because our budget this year is so crucial in the way you folks approve it, and you folks represent us as stockholders of the city of Atwater, I think it's imperative that we hold another study session, go through each department, line item by line item, and see if there's ways that you can save us all some money and yet run the city as economically as you can. I have the budget, I've looked at it, and I've seen things that I think maybe possibly you've seen too, but I just think it's very important that we all spend the time to go over it as one big family of taxpayers and see if we can just keep this ball rolling in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time during public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public.
We will continue the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. So used to that. We will continue the public hearing to this particular item to the 26th of this month, at which time we will come back with a more in-depth view of this. In the interim, we will explore some dates here in order to do a workshop analysis here and get this thing going, okay? I want to assure the public that, you know, we're not taking this budget lightly in one way, shape, or form. We are very cognizant of the fact that this is, you know, the money that we need to use to provide those services and functions that the city is challenged to do. So, rest assured, we are looking at every single item and that it will come back to the best of our knowledge and our abilities. We will announce a time and date for the workshop. Mr. Vineyard.
I just want to make sure we don't need a motion for that. Were we cleared?
We should need a motion. We need a motion to continue the public hearing.
Then I'll make a motion to, all right now, a motion to continue the fiscal year budget until the council meeting of 6:26 with a workshop to be provided somewhere in that timeframe.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. Okay. Call for the question.
Creighton is absent. Raymond?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Reports and presentation from staff, Verbal Update Regarding the City Operated Tow Yard.
Chief Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick update. I spoke to, Brian's here, you can kind of answer questions too if you have anything specific, but I spoke to Cecil Tripp as of yesterday, today, and his completion date is probably going to be this Friday, so we're hoping to get everything going operational hopefully by next Monday. So, it's going as planned and I want to thank Brian Shaw and assistants doing, helping us that, and also Scott McBride for helping us on that as well.
Okay. And to be clear, your staff and everyone involved over there is ready to take on the administration.
Yes, yes. We went over there, Sergeant Wisdom's going to be in charge of it until his departure, and then we're going to have to have a Plan B, which I kind of already have in line, I'll have to go over with Mr. McBride, but hopefully by Monday, we should get everything operational.
Okay, very good. Mr. Vineyard.
Yeah, it doesn't have to do with the operation. Yeah, it just doesn't have to do with the operation of the yard, but it has to do with the question I wanted to ask earlier. Receives numerous calls, probably other council members have two, in regards to the trailer, it's on station, can you give us the status of that, please?
Yes, councilman, this one on station is our code enforcement officer, Fabian Velazquez is working on that, and the issue with that one is the owner basically is telling us, "Do what you wanna do with it, the cost, the city's gonna have to absorb the cost." So, what Mr. Velazquez is working right now is trying to do something where the city will not absorb the cost, and working with the CHP or doing something to eliminate that problem, he's working diligently on, and hopefully by sometime this week or next week, we'll be a conclusion on that.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Chief Joseph pertaining to the tow yard? Okay, we're gonna hold your feet to the fire on this one, Sam. Okay, next item, please.
City Council Matters, Verbal Update Regarding Department of Justice Grants.
Uh, Mr.? Okay, he was the protester, you don't have any information? Okay. We'll postpone item eighteen also to the twenty-sixth, so that we can get a report on that.
Next item is City Council Comments.
Mr. Raymond?
First, thanks to Mr. McBride earlier, just wanna extend our thoughts and prayers out to Ramon and his family for the speedy recovery of his dad. Also, kinda hinting on what other people have been saying tonight, we were driving around town yesterday, and it just saddens me with the shape our parks are in. You know, it's something that we have to focus on, it's something that can bring people to the community, my family, you know, they have to go to Merced to play on nice parks, and that's not, not the way it should be. I know, I know Frank Pietro was the city manager at the time, but we, Mayor, didn't we go, look to go to RFP for parks?
Yes, and I...
Preventness?
Yes, is the answer to your question.
Did we get anything back on that ever?
I think we only had one reply, and I think we could probably go ahead and, you know, reinstitute that for an RFQ or an RFP, the one there, we can certainly look into that.
Okay, that's all, that's all I just wanna say.
Okay. Mr. Vineyard? I'm sorry. Mrs.?
There's a rumor.
You know who you are, you know who you are.
I have no comments.
Thank God. Mr. Vineyard? That's you.
First of all, I wanna thank the ladies that came to do the tobacco control program. I've talked to their leader, and I just wanna thank you for coming and being nervous and giving us what we did, because the fire department learned that cigarettes start fire, so that's important, right? The second thing I wanna address is something, it's very disturbing to me. First Amendment, as everybody kinda talk and say what they want, to a degree. We all know in the council and those members of the CDRC take an oath, and we go through And I don't read in the newspaper that much, I don't, like, once in a while, I'll just go into the editorials. There was an editorial that greatly disturbed me. There was a term they used, and as I read it, to me, it referred to every employee of this city, it referred to every council member, and it's a derogatory remark, as far as I'm concerned. It was started two years ago against a prominent businessman, and now it's crept into calling the city employees the same exact thing. To me, the person that wrote it, who's on a committee, should be removed immediately for violating the conduct of members. There's this section, says, "The professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Members shall refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of elected or appointed office, staff, or public." This editorial refers to everybody in the city as weasels. I take great offense to that. We don't need that type of remark. Now, I've been told, you gotta let these things go. This crosses the line, so far, I'm not letting it go. So, I'm actually demanding, but on one vote, that the person that wrote this be removed from the CDRC immediately. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Terpstra, do you have any comment to that request? Fourth of July is rapidly approaching us, and, man, from what it looks like here, starting this Friday, it's gonna start smoking around here, it's gonna get pretty hot, so, Fourth of July is not immune from all of that, but it always seems that we always get very, very well-attended parades, and the celebration in the parks and everything else, and, as I said, for last year, out at Castle for the fireworks and concert, it was estimated we had around thirteen thousand people show up out there, which was about maybe a three-thousand person bump from what we had the year before. This year, I don't imagine that we're gonna be less than thirteen thousand, I think we're gonna have more, because Livingston is gonna have their fireworks and everything on the second, I believe. So, in any case, I think we're gonna draw from Livingston and Merced and all around, so this is gonna be a big deal. This year's entertainment out at Castle is going to be country and western, or, well, we'll just say country, that western part, I don't think anybody uses that anymore, but it's a country band by the name of Crossside, from Modesto, small band with big country sound, is how they build themselves. We're looking at starting the program at seven-thirty, and musicals start at approximately seven-forty-five, go for ninety minutes, followed right behind it with a fireworks display, so, come on out, that's always a lot of fun out there, it's a big deal, and we have local favorite, for those that know him, Steve Kaufman will be doing the singing of our national anthem prior to the music taking place. As you may have noticed here lately, the fire season is upon us, and with it always comes the drones. I just wanna remind people that we are very active now with our firebase at Castle Airport. People like to fly drones to get these video shots of aircraft and all that. It is a federal law that you cannot fly a drone within five-mile radius of an airport, and we damn sure don't wanna go and fly a drone in front of a DC-10 that's coming in to go and turn and burn back to a fire. They'll suck up one of those things in an engine, and you will kill everybody onboard, there's just no getting around it, so please, don't fly the drones around the airport, and if you're at a fire, if you see a fire burning somewhere up in the hills here locally, do not fly a drone up there either. The federal regulations restrict you from flying a drone anywhere where a fire is burning and there is air operations going on, so please, keep that in mind, watch what you're doing up there in the hills, even with the rain and that weird lightning storm and everything that we had yesterday. Red Hills Road and an area up by Don Pedro, during the rain and the thunder and everything else, still ignited two lightning strike fires, they burned all night long, eighty-six acres or so this morning, up on Red Hills Road near Chinese Camp, so, even in a rainstorm, it is so dry up there, we are, we are seeing the fires, so please, be extremely careful up there. And lastly, I wanted to, and I'm sure a lot of people here already know this, but I'm gonna give them a shout-out anyway, so that everybody knows, Jams 209, right out in front of the city hall here, is open for business, been there a couple of times, the food is great, the atmosphere, everything is in there, they sank a ton of money into that place, and it shows. It's definitely not the old Risenellis that we come to see before. I'm sure there's probably a packed house over there tonight, I think there's a game on somewhere, isn't there? Yeah, in any case, yeah, that's a shame, you know? In any case, if you have occasion to be looking for a place for a good lunch or dinner, that's the place to go, it's a great place, show them some patronage over there, it's really nice, and I'm glad that they came to Atwater to set up business. We also have the Round Table Pizza is up and running now over there, equally nice over there, please get on over there and patronize these places, these are, these are nice places to go to, take your family to, okay? Yes, ma'am?
Where can we take checks, because it's like a July fireworks?
Take checks?
Where do we need to give them to?
Oh, if you wanna make a donation, if anybody wants to make a donation to match my hundred dollars to the Atwater Fire, Fourth of July, you can go to the website, it's Fourth of July, Atwater Fourth of July, and you can find out where to go there, or I can take it and forward it, and I'm on the committee, so, either way, okay? Please, that is also donor-supported, so it doesn't happen unless you get donations, city doesn't, doesn't buy that one, so, okay? And it takes a lot of cash, it's about forty grand to do, so.
Tom's a donor.
Okay, all right, folks, if there's nothing else to bring up, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you all at home for watching, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.